Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please? Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
We'll call Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a special proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas the Renton community is proud to be the home of the Seattle Seahawks headquarters and training facility, which is celebrating the fifth anniversary of the opening of its 225,000 square foot state-of-the-art Virginia Mason Athletic Center in its unparalleled location on the shores of Lake Washington. And whereas the Seahawks are welcoming the public on 14 practices in Renton in late July and August, and an estimated 20,000 fans from across the region will be visiting our fine city to cheer on the Seahawks. And whereas following such successful and exciting 2012 football season, the Seahawks' popularity has translated into a number of sold-out training camps this summer. And whereas the Renton Community Marketing Campaign is proud to again partner with the Seahawks to organize a citywide Renton Welcome Seahawks Fans Campaign. And whereas the City of Renton Public Buildings will proudly fly #12 flags and residents and businesses throughout the city will be displaying Seahawks Training Camp in Renton Cheer Cards. And whereas the Renton community is encouraged to wear Seahawks colors on Friday, August 9th, to show their support for the team. And whereas the Seattle Seahawks continue to contribute significantly to the Renton community as a strong partner and corporate citizen, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim August 2013 to be Renton Welcome Seahawks Fans to Training Camp Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 15th day of July 2013, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with this proclamation?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with this proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And it's my pleasure to be able to present this to our friend Mike Flood, who's Vice President of Community Relations for the Seattle Seahawks, and Mark Tamar, Director of Event Presentation and Fan Engagement. I think just like our football team, our partnership with the City of Renton has gotten stronger every year. And Mark and I have been working close with Pretty, Bonnie, and all the staff to iron out all the details that it'll take to house almost 2,500 people for each practice. We have 14 practices this year. Six are already sold out, with 2,500 being our maximum that we can hold on the facility. So, we're hoping that those people do a lot of commerce work in Renton at the landing, and that they enjoy their time here and the views on the beautiful shores of Lake Washington. But we also thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council, for leading rallies. Last year, we had 1,000 people as the team took off for one of the playoff games, and we appreciate everything that you've done, and we appreciate also our partnership with the Superintendent of Schools and the Chamber of Commerce and everyone else that we work with in this tight-knit community to make things go. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike and Mark. Thank you for being here, and we really look forward to all the rallies this year.
Yeah, we do.
We're all set, we're geared up. Let's hope they last all the way into February. That's what we're planning on. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a special presentation from communities and schools of Renton. Sue Parrow.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. Mayor Law, thank you for this opportunity. You've heard me talk over the last couple of years about communities and schools, five-year evaluation, and accreditation, and a lot of work that we were doing around that. And one of the things that the CIS evaluation said was that if you hold to the fidelity of what the evaluation showed was important in serving kids and preventing dropout, that you can claim their statement that we are the number-one dropout prevention program. So, given that evaluation and how it showed what the core piece of CIS was and how we needed to deliver that service, for the last two years, CIS of Renton has been on that journey to be reaccredited. We've been accredited as CIS, but this was to fall in place with the five-year evaluation. And the handout that you have, just more of a visual, that in there are 51 standards or indicators that, for the business side as well as the program side, of the kinds of things that we had to accomplish over those two years. Many were in place, we had to shore some things up, add a few things, but it was not an easy process, but it surely was a fruitful process. And now that we have been accredited because of the evaluation, we can stand firmly on that dropout prevention program. So, I have a little story. I was looking at two different stories, and one of them I knew I couldn't get through without crying, so I'll pick a different night for that one. But this one was just a short, little story from one of our mentors that we happen to know, works in the school district, and she was so touched by the mentee that she works with. This is to the family liaison, and the names have been changed, of course. Sammy brought back one of the gift bags I had given her, and inside were a lot of surprises for me. A pine cone, some little felt balls, a little toy she said she didn't want, and a special ping-pong ball. Everything was wrapped individually, but the most special thing was a card that she wrote. Quote, "You touched my life in ways you might not ever be known. Love, Sammy." Sammy's the mentee, the elementary student. Mentor goes on, "Can you believe that? I asked her if her dad helped her, and she said he didn't even know she had bought me the card. The outside of the card was raining cats and dogs, and inside said, 'When it rains, it pours. Hang in there.'" She said she picked that one because of my brother-in-law passing away. Isn't that sweet? I'm so thankful that you paired me with Sammy. Just one of the little ways that the mentors show that it doesn't just touch the kids' lives, but it also touches the adults' lives, and how important this program is in Renton. So, with that, I would like to read the plaque and then present it to Mayor Law and the council. Cities and Schools proudly recognizes City of Renton for its partnership with Communities and Schools of Renton, a nationally accredited affiliate organization that has achieved all Communities and Schools' total quality system requirements. The City of Renton is commended for its continued support of the comprehensive Communities and Schools model. This accomplishment is indicative of strong leadership, sound business practice, a commitment to rigorous evaluation, and effective integration of resources and services to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. My sincere thanks to Mayor Law and the City Council and the city staff, and all those in the City of Renton that support this program. Thank you.
And it goes without saying, we're so totally committed to Communities and Schools of Renton and the wonderful work that this organization does for our kids each year. And we've been blessed to have council members involved as mentors over a number of years, and Marcy still continues to be a mentor for a couple of students, I believe. And so, anyway, thank you very much for the work you're doing. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council, a number of items I wanted to just make you aware of, and also the public. It is, as we've known the last couple of weeks, a busy summer season, and we are doing our best to make sure that there's not a person in Renton that can't find something to do. And so, in addition to the Seahawks camp, if you haven't signed up for that, we have a number of other activities. This Wednesday, the 17th, John Casey's band performs at Kid Valley Concert Series at Coulon Park. That begins at 7:00 PM. We have several neighborhood picnics this week. The Maplewood Estates Homeowners Association will hold their picnic Wednesday, the 17th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at their neighborhood park, which is at southeast 2nd Street and Orcas Avenue. And the Lacrosse Homeowners Association will hold their annual picnic Thursday, the 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the Common area located in northeast 36th Place and Monterey Court Northeast. Again, neighborhood residents are encouraged to bring their favorite potluck dish and attend the picnic to get to know their immediate and surrounding neighbors and to meet city representatives that'll be there. King County Library System is co-sponsoring the Amazement Magic Show with Jeff Evans, the magician, performing For All Ages at Tiffany Park, Friday, the 19th, at noon. That's a free event. And the first Family Fun Film Series starts on the 19th at the Biatazza Park with the movie Transformers. Seating begins at 7:00 PM. Family entertainment starts at approximately 7:45, and the movie is being sponsored by Rain City Catering. Our Senior Activity Center is co-sponsoring a Senior Health Fair with the Renton Housing Authority Saturday, the 20th, at St. Andrews Presbyterian Church. The fair will have community information booths, a presentation on heart health, hearing loss and fraud, plus vision and blood pressure screenings, and that event is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And just for people to begin to mark your calendars, on Tuesday, August 6th, is the National Night Out. So, we're encouraging neighborhoods throughout Renton to join forces with thousands of communities nationwide for the 30th Annual National Night Out, which is an effort to advertise and do what we can do to begin to prevent crime and drug enforcement, drug prevention, excuse me. So, we'll celebrate our National Night Out by hosting an event at Philip Arnold Park up on Renton Hill from 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and there'll be more that we'll announce on that Monday, the 5th, when we're back together. The last thing I just want to make folks aware of, the Police Department Citizens Academy, which is designed to educate Renton residents and business merchants in how the police department operates. The academy includes an optional ride-along with patrol officers and tours of the 911 dispatch center. The 12-week academy meets once a week from 7:00 PM till 9:00 PM, and the next session is scheduled to begin Thursday, September 12th. So, begin to look at your calendar and see if that'll work for you. We'd love to have you onboard. That is all for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. And now, council, I'm going to call upon Greg Taylor to make an introduction of some very special guests we have here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to have the privilege to do this. I want to first thank the person who brought this to my attention, who is a friend. Her name is Robin Jones. She operates with the Seattle Lumbasa Sister City Association, and she's currently working on efforts to create more African sister-city relationships. And I am pleased to introduce our dignified guest, who've come a long, long, long way. I'd like to introduce the mayor of the City of Kumasi, the city of shared happiness, which is on the Ivory Coast, Mr. Raymond Ndoi Yapi. He will be joined by his interpreter. Her name is Solange, and she is the chairman for the future sister-city that is being formed in the city of Kent. And I can't go without recognizing Robyn. If you could just wave your hand so everyone can recognize her also. And so, Solange is going to be interpreting for the mayor.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire, merci aux membres du Conseil Municipal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council member. Je suis Raymond Ndoi Yapi. My name is Raymond Yapi. Je suis maire de la commune de Kumasi en Côte d'Ivoire. I'm the mayor of Kumasi, a city in Ivory Coast. Kumasi est une commune de 500,000 habitants. Population 500,000. Je suis venu ici pour chercher à établir des relations. I'm here to explore new relationships over cities around the world. Parce que habituellement, c'est vers les pays francophones que nous nous tournons, mais nous sommes à l'heure de la mondialisation, et nous pensons que nous pouvons nous inspirer des expériences des États-Unis. Because traditionally, we always go to Europe, especially French, because we're a French-speaking country. But now, because of the global war we live in, and we want to come to the great democracies in the United States to benefit from its experience. Et naturellement, notre choix c'est porter sur votre belle cité. And we chose to come to that beautiful city. Grâce à l'entremise de certains amis. And because of Miss Robin. And because of me, Solange, I live here in Auburn. Et nous pensons que ces relations doivent pouvoir nous permettre d'établir des échanges. And we look forward to exchange. Entre les populations de Kumasi et les populations de Renton. Between the two communities. Beneficier de votre expérience en matière de développement d'aménagement du territoire également. To learn from your development, for urban development, and over, like, school and stuff, yeah. Et bien évidemment, permettre à nos populations d'aspirer à un mieux-être. In order for people to seek a better future. Parce que vous savez que notre histoire de guerre. We just finished 10 years of political unrest. Et aujourd'hui, nous sommes en train de faire des efforts pour que les populations qui se sont senties appauvries de faire de la guerre. And we're doing all we can to help minimize the impact of that 10 years of unrest. Pour aspirer à un mieux-être. To have a better future for our children. Et donc, instaurer la paix et la réconciliation dans notre cité, dans le pays. To install peace and reconciliation among the people. Et nous pensons qu'en matière de paix et de démocratie, les États-Unis doivent beaucoup à nous apprendre. And we have a lot to learn from the US, who is a great democracy in the world. Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're very pleased to have you here in Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that the mayor brought his lovely wife, Armande, along with him, and she is sitting right next to him.
Well, we're trying to arrange maybe to have a photograph of the council in the background here?
That'd be nice.
Two mayors.
Yeah. That's what you came back for.
Ready? One, two, three. One more just to say, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
One, one, shaking hands. Thank you. Very nice. Any more?
We have several people who have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, give your name and city of residence. For the record, you have five minutes. First is Howard McComber.
This is me springing up there.
Oh, fancy cane.
Nothing romantic or serious about this, no great story. Anyway, Howard McComber, live in the Renton Highlands. What I'd like to talk to you tonight about is something we're all aware of, and that's the need for affordable housing, and it has to be coming from the private sector. The public sector's doing all they can. Mark's doing a fabulous job. There's only so many tax dollars that can be put into this, and so, we're trying to get, I've got some fellows that are working with me, we're trying to get a private relationship, public relationship, so that we can have increased housing, affordable housing, for people in the lower half of the median income. That's new, that's good, that matches all the things Chip Vincent Watson and the development. And our target right now is the Sunset Revitalization Area, which I thank you for all the things you've done there. But to make it stable and solid, we need to have more housing that's owner-occupied, where the people are there, and where they, we're working this out, where the house is sold, it goes to someone else who also is in the same category, so we have people there who can help the community, who can vitalize and stabilize the situation. So, I just thank you for all your support, especially for Rich and the group that he works with so diligently, but all of you. You're all been tremendous and supportive of improving our Renton Highlands, and I appreciate that. And I'll be available for other topic and stuff, and Jay and Chip will be in touch with me on detail work, I'm positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker?
Yeah, along those lines. Howard had called me earlier today and dropped off a document, and I was going to refer it under new business, but since Howard just spoke to it, if the council indulges me, I'll go ahead and refer to the Planning and Development Committee, the correspondence from Mr. McComber with today's date entitled Proposed Amendment to Encourage Affordable Owner-Ocupied Homes in the Sunset Redevelopment Area into the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that correspondence from Mr. McComber be referred to the Planning and Development Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Adam Clark, I have a copy of that for you.
Okay, next is Paul Wollett.
My name is Paul Wollett from Renton. If you'll excuse me a moment, I'd like to welcome our friend. It's been a while since I've had to practice my French. I couldn't catch up the opportunity. A couple of comments that I can make. One of the things that I want to observe, I guess, is that there's probably been some people, some folks and stuff, that have taken exception to some of the citizens groups and so on about the appeal and all these other issues and stuff of the library, and with the, I think they fail to, they assume that the people are trying to delay the project, but that's far from the truth. I think you can, the evidence is there, that since the citizens started commenting here, we've ended up with a library over the river, is what the people wanted. We've ended up with a little bit larger library than what was originally submitted. So, it's really been a positive thing, and we want to continue that discussion. The reason for my comment tonight is, again, to request a response to, this is not new information, by the way, Mr. City Attorney, it's all on the public record, okay? And back in April, when the council approved the schematic drawings, there was a request by the council that the KCLS and Miller-Hall would address the possibility of having a second entrance from the bridge into the existing vestibule. I received some responses from the administration on that back in April, or rather, in May, at the end of May, a couple of months ago, that the library team, in answer to the request that the library team consider adding a second door that opens from the entrance to the vestibule directly onto the bridge as part of the design. The city and KCLS and their project architect, Miller-Hall, will indeed consider the council's request as a matter of course. What we're asking tonight is, where is the response? When is KCLS and Miller-Hall going to come back to the table and respond and tell us why it cannot be done? I think if you recall from previous meetings and so on, we provided sketches to the administration, and it's my understanding that these were sent by Peter Brenner to KCLS in terms of how it could be achieved very easily, but we've received no observation. In the land use documents that were submitted, along with the SEPA and so on, there's no indication of anything having been considered. So, our question here tonight is simply, when are we going to get a response to what you said was going to be considered? Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Nicola Robinson.
Nicola Robinson, and I'm a Renton resident, and this is very brief also, and I'm just going to reiterate that we're here to state our continued support, our continued support to keep the library over the river. We're not trying to stop the project, nor do we want the library moved, and this is to counter any spin that may result in advance about what our intentions are, about for our actions. And the following is a part of the public record, that a part of the SEPA review checklist, which actually was not on the list that was given to you in the presentation, is regarding specifically question 13, the historic and cultural significance. This question goes into details about issues of public access and patterns of public use. All parts of this question were answered in the negative, none. KCLS through Miller-Hall gave very inadequate and incorrect answers to question 13, and this was not challenged by the city when it approved that checklist. And it deals with, directly with, the historic and cultural aspect of the building and the site. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Beth Asher.
Hi, Beth Asher, Renton, and of course, I want to speak on the library, and I just want everyone to know, we are totally for the new library. We want this process to move forward, and it's going to be a smoking-hot, state-of-the-art facility. The SEPA review process is not scary. The appeal is a normal part of the process, it's there for residents to use when they want to point out that there is cultural and historical significance to an existing feature. Well, the library certainly has cultural and historical significance, both internal and external, and it has a pattern of use and a pattern of entry that is really culturally significant to the residents of Renton, and they have made this plain so many times. So, when the determination came back, nonsignificance, no cultural or historical significance whatsoever for the location, for the building, for the history behind it, for the donations given by past residents, for any of that, we felt we had to challenge that determination. And again, it's nothing scary, it's a normal part of the process. We would like to ask again that a primary entry be considered off the vestibule, that could easily be done, and that is, again, part of the record, that's been made part of the record much earlier. And we also know- been made part of the record much earlier. And we also noticed that there isn't any preservative language in any of the submittals, including the long verbal and written submittal that goes with the land use application. So we would like preservative language for things like the brass screens that are inside the library, the Sartori picture, that kind of thing. We'd like to know that those things will be preserved for future residents, for remembrance, from our historical aspect, you know, from our standpoint that we are unique. There are two libraries in the United States only that span a river. The other library, the middle of it, is actually a breezeway between two landlocked buildings. Ours is the only one in the United States with an entry on the river that was deliberately designed to allow usage from either side and to allow for a direct tie to nature. And that is its most cultural aspect, and something that I feel residents hold dear. Therefore, you know, we've put in the appeal. Again, not scary, nothing awful. Want the process to go forward, want that new library. We just would like consideration and evaluation of these points. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Keyes.
David Keyes, Renton resident. Beth said much of what I might have chosen to say. I'd like to kind of preface my remarks with thanking Larry Warren for his remarks at the beginning of the committee of the whole meeting. I thought that from what I know of what you do, that was very appropriate and necessary. So it's appreciated. I will reiterate a little bit about what Beth said. We're not throwing some gauntlet or tomahawk down here. We're asking for some issues that were completely omitted in that SEPA checklist and in the land use submittal to be addressed. And the ways we'd like them addressed are not anything new to the members of this council. The rest of it, we'll argue in the hearings, I think. But I think the audience at home needs to understand that this is not an attempt to undo the progress that has been made here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen. Karen, I'm gonna ruin your last name. Is it Suave? Or did I ruin that?
It's Karen Sobey.
I apologize.
I am a Renton resident. And I'm here too, because I want to keep the library over the river, and I want the project to keep going. But, and I wishfully accept that instead of upgrading and preserving a unique and award-winning building, our Cedar River Library will be demolished down to the deck and be rebuilt much smaller. But I'm confident that it's going to be something of beauty and value when it's done. But all the parties involved must realize and remember that when this new library is completed, it will not be just a KCLS managed library, but it will be continuing to be a Renton library, and it must reflect Renton's culture and history. To this end, I insist on a reasonable and adequate mitigation for the project's impact on the cultural and historical and scientific aspects of the area, and the existing public access to the library, the park, and the river. The designers of the existing building took all this into account. They got it, that this library is part of something greater than itself. The Cedar River and Liberty Park and the library form a wonderful triad, a great experience for our citizens and our visitors that requires a public entrance over the river, an entrance that can be gained not only from the main parking lot, but from the park side and its parking lot as well. This is a historical public use and public access. We're getting a new library. Make it a uniquely Renton library, and not just another KCLS glass box. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dave Beeden.
I'm Dave Beeden. I live in Renton. I'd like to echo what Mr. Olet said earlier and others have said.
You have to do it in French.
(laughing).
Sorry, David.
Last April, the city council made a request to KCLS to consider, I don't know the exact wording either, a second entrance, but an entrance over the river, basically is what it was. And it's my understanding that there's been no response to that request to date. And if I'm misunderstanding that, I'd like to know. And basically, I want to know if KCLS has made a response, and if so, in what form, and how can we see it? Is anybody able to answer that question at this time? Is that even appropriate right now?
Mr. Covington?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe that they did give us information, and I'll find out. I thought that it had been forwarded on and put on our website. If not, we will look at that and make sure that we forward that to you. But I believe they did make a determination. And my recollection is that they determined that they wouldn't, could not put the door in the middle of the walkway, in the middle of the building, without it impacting the operations of the library, and there were some structural issues as well. But I'll, I'm pretty sure we got a letter from the architects, so we'll forward that letter on.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Corman.
I think the question's a little bit different than that, though. The item that Mr. Beeden's referring to was, when we did approve the schematic design, and we had asked that, that we look at putting a second door into the new vestibule that's being built at, let me get this right, it would be the southeast corner of the building. And so it would be a door that wouldn't be off the midspan, but a door that goes into a vestibule that already arranged. So it wouldn't affect the operational aspects. It just, I think the question that was out there was, would the swing of the door block traffic, or would it interfere structurally on that end of the building?
Right. As I recall, there was a schematic done by the audience, I think Mr. Olet drew it, that showed the door on the other side of the vestibule, or at least closer towards the middle of the library. And so, again, I'll defer to KCLS to look at that. But it does, in fact, affect how they intake books and other things. It would have moved the vestibule more towards the center of the library, would have decreased overall usable square footage by the library, and the way they lay it out and that. So, but I'll, again, I don't want to try to speak on behalf of KCLS. You're right, the request was for us to ask them to consider that, and my recollection is they did do that, and we'll get that information back.
How can I follow up on that?
Yes, go ahead.
Pardon me? How can I follow up on that?
Well, we're gonna get, if it isn't on the website, we're gonna get it posted there. So the information is on there.
Is there a timeframe for doing that?
Well, we'll certainly address it tomorrow, so, within the next couple of days for sure. Mr. Mayor? Okay. Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Yeah, along those lines, I always question the council, so I would think that you need to answer back to the council, because it's news to me that you got a response. I assumed we were still waiting on it. So if you could make sure it's properly updated, if we're in fact answered, because it may not have actually been answered. So, thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. We have six items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Palmer, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And I'll make note that our new official population for the city of Renton is now 95,540 people. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have one committee report.
Transportation Aviation Committee report, agreement with Reed Middleton. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a standard consultant agreement with Reed Middleton Incorporated for construction management and inspection for the Taxiway Bravo Rehabilitation Project South portion in the amount of $626,758, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement, subject to availability of federal funding by the FAA. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move council concur with the Transportation Aviation Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Aviation Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has a report.
Finance Committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on July 15, 2013, claim vouchers 322-084 through 322-434, three-wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $6,218,950.16. And payroll vouchers include 799 direct deposits and 150 payroll checks totaling $1,683,838.11. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Zwicker?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution this evening.
This resolution concerns street closure. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the closure of a portion of Northeast 38th Street between Jones Avenue Northeast and Lincoln Avenue Northeast.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that this council adopt the resolution as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mayor. First thing I need to do is, well, I'll go ahead and make the motion, then explain it. I'd like to move that next week's council meeting, July 22, and the committee of the whole meeting, both be canceled.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person, that council cancel the July 22 council meeting and committee of the whole.
And if I could just speak to the motion, we're gonna have some absences next week, and we looked at the business and we're able to shuffle it around. So of council's indulgence, I'd like to suggest we approve that motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. And then, I just, I guess I do want to just go over the calendar a little bit here. So obviously announce that in the committee of the whole meeting that goes with, next week is canceled. As a reminder, July 29 is actually the fifth Monday of the month, and we do not have council meetings on the fifth Monday. So it'll actually be three more weeks before we have a council meeting with that cancellation. And then, August 5, the committee of the whole meeting is canceled because we're going to have a very special reception instead. At 6 o'clock PM, we're having a reception for Kirby Entei in the seventh floor conferencing center, celebrate his moving on to bishop in Lutheran Church, and all the work that he had done here in Renton. And that's all, I think, that I have to announce.
Okay, Mr. Corman, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes. First off, I need to refer three items to the Transportation Aviation Committee. Can I do these, all three, in one motion?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. First is, all three have to do with Boeing lease amendments. Boeing Lease Amendment Number Two is a CPI increase. Boeing Lease Amendment Number Three is Apron B Boundary Line Adjustment and Utility Easement. And the third item to be referred is Boeing Lease Amendment Four, leasing of 760 and 77 parcel.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that three items involving Boeing leases Number Two, Three, and Four be referred to the Transportation and Aviation Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. And then, the next Transportation Aviation Committee meeting will be on Thursday, July 25, at 4:00 PM in the council conference room, and those are the three items on the agenda.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Meeting scheduled for August 5 is canceled.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee meeting for July 22 is canceled.
Ready? Ms. Breyer?
Yes, on Monday, August 5, the Finance Committee will meet at 4:30 PM. We have three items, vouchers, the second quarter budget amendment ordinance, and emerging issues in revenue streams. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Zwicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Development Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, August 5, has been canceled. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee meeting that is scheduled for July 22 has been canceled. Also, on August 5, the Community Service Committee meeting will be canceled as well. And I'd be remiss if not, oh, I'm sorry, no, it isn't canceled. We have some items on the agenda. Let me announce them. We will be meeting on August 5 at 5:30 PM, and we will have two items on the agenda. One is gonna be the second round of neighborhood grants, and the other is gonna be the Cedar River Trail Lot Line Adjustment. Also, some of you may be surprised to see me here tonight. I'm back a little bit early from my excursion on the East Coast. I can tell you that I had an opportunity to go to the Harvard Kennedy School, but unfortunately, it coincided with another trip that I had to National Harbor, Maryland, and that came right in the beginning of my Harvard trip. And they've got a pretty strict policy of wanting 100% participation in the program, and so I have to postpone it for next year. I did spend a few days in Cambridge at Harvard. I did learn a lot in those two days. I'll report some of that back to you. But I did complete the entire conference training in National Harbor, and I'm excited about the follow-up work that I get to do with Keene County, in terms of some of the community action plans that they're going to come up with. And I will be delighted to report some of the data, information that we compiled, once I have an opportunity to debrief with the county. And looking forward to it. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Taylor. Next is audience comment. Is anybody who didn't get to address the council that wants to address the council?
If we adjourn.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.